Six o'clock. We're gonna call this to order. Welcome, everybody. Everybody's getting seated. We're gonna look for a roll call. And we will wait for Amanda to hit back.
Amanda Hubot, Director of Student Services.
Sean Winingham, Principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Megan Reed, Assistant Principal, Sunapee Middle High School.
Patrick Corrigan, Principal, Sunapee Central Maternity School. David Fladers, student representative.
David Fladers, school board?
Kerry Bosserwood.
Scott Rixson, school board.
At Anderson School Board.
Russell, Superintendent.
Kelly Russell, student superintendent.
If we could stand and.
Quite religious to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the heavens.
We'll start out with looking for an approval of the school board meeting minutes. Somebody would make a motion.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October fourth school board meeting.
Does anybody have any concerns or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? None? Uh, the agenda review? Nothing on our end, all set. And we will look for the school state testing overview. Sean and Patrick.
You go first.
Sure.
Within the board packets, did you get the testing information that I included first of all?
Do we ever carry that?
Fair enough. I can carry it. Um, so I included data really in three different ways, um, or three different types. The first is our SAT data, uh, which is pretty public. Um, you know, that that's reported each year and usually gets published, uh, through the state. The good news, uh, is that we typically do pretty well on SAT. Um, the continuing good news is we continue to do well again this year on the SAT. So this is, uh, for the class of two thousand and twenty-four, um, the average score, uh, for a Sunapee student in the, in this year's senior class was a ten ninety-five. Uh, the state average was a nine ninety-five. See the breakdown in the reading and the math. So we're thirty points on average higher in reading than state average, uh, seventy points higher than the math, uh, on the state average. And again, you know, New Hampshire is a, a, a state that tests well. Interestingly enough, uh, our average score for New Hampshire is not that great, um, because everybody hates it. So it's interesting when you look at the scores nationwide, the average scores, you can really tell. Um, I think it's one of the southern states has, believe it or not, the highest average score, but only two percent of the kids take it. So looking at that information in general, but when they do the, uh, the national testing, New Hampshire typically comes in, uh, top five. So again, we're, we're, uh, we're very, uh, we're in a high, very high performing state. We continue to perform at a high rate at the high school. Um, out of seventy-nine public high schools, Sunapee was number seven last year. So it's a number of years we've been in the top ten, um, consistently. And I think there was one charter school that does particularly well. They still were above us, but all the other charter schools in the state were able to as well. So again, good news on the, on the SAT, uh, high school data. Uh, we, you know, we like to do well. We continue to do well. Students take it seriously. And that's good information. So that's the first thing I have. The second thing that I've shared with you is the New Hampshire State Assessment for grades six through eight. Um, I gave you the proficiency levels, um, for grade six, seven, and eight. Uh, again, what we try to do here, um, quite personally, I'd like it if we're typically double digits percentage-wise on proficiency over the state average. Uh, we typically, again, we typically are, uh, if we look at last year, the sixth grade, uh, their reading proficiency was sixty-three percent. And the state average is fifty-three percent. Uh, the math proficiency rate was sixty percent and the state average forty-two percent. Like, again, some people, you know, could say, wow, you only have sixty percent of your kids are proficient. You know, I think it's a legitimate test. You can make a test. Your kid have a hundred percent proficiency or ninety-eight percent proficiency. You could have a tougher test if you have a hundred proficiency. Again, we're in a high performance state, so I generally, you know, think a good way to look at that is to, to look at that state average and how we compare it to that. We do have the information and the parents have the information for how their children did. And sometimes the kids are, they're in a one or they're two or between the four. Uh, happily, we don't have a lot of surprises on these. Again, a four and a three on this, on these tests would be proficiency, no matter one or two, not. Our grade seven last year was, um, in reading was the only area where we finished below the state average. By one percentage point. And then the seventh grade, uh, math was eight percent, percentage points above. And then for eighth grade, as you can see, uh, Sunapee proficiency in reading was seventy percent, math was sixty percent. Significantly higher than the state average.
Do you, um, like that seventh grade class? Do you look back at what, how that, that same class performed in sixth grade?
We do. And then traditionally, the seventh, and seventh grade is down. Eighth grade has traditionally not been, um, a strong testing class for us. Yeah, there are fewer students as well in there, um, which can, which can do it either way. Sometimes those tend to be really high classes or, or you're really low ones, um, you know, times. We're, we're typically not very low, but we do, we certainly look at that data. So we wanna look at, did we have eighty percent proficiency one year? And then sixty percent the other year. Now, there's, there's a possibility, the test just became a lot harder. So if we were eighty, if we were eighty percent proficiency, and the state was at eighty percent proficiency, and then the next year we were at sixty percent proficiency, and the state average was thirty-five, that would be like, there was a big change to the test. But we do look at that data. We find typically, um, I think historically, we, we typically look from the elementary to the high school. So we have the trajectory to a bunch, which is we get a little bit better, you know, because we go along the process.
I know you, Sean, same kind of question. The eighth is the current ninth.
The eighth now is the current ninth.
Does not include, because it's such a big tuition class.
Correct. Would not include that.
We don't know that. Okay.
And what you don't have here, um, which we look at a lot, it's kind of intentional. So we, we do a lot, I think, with the new access, I think we're talking about that, where the teachers and administration really, really get to see how a student grows from each year, you know, from, from one year from that. So we look at that data a lot. Um, but not really, in the state, doesn't even. So this gives us really comparison, this is about a comparison between other schools. And you would really much, or have a, have a nice student or have a nice student grow compared to.
Do you ever hear, like, with the SAT testing, with so many of the colleges being test optional now, is there any talk about that just going, like, going away eventually?
That's a good question. Um, you know, no, I don't think it's gonna go away. But I think it does bring up the importance of, which we'll bring in later on in these placement classes. Because, you know, when, when you see so many students now, uh, and this is not a negative, but when you see so many students who have, you know, let's just say between a three-point-five and four-point upgrade on average. And if you're only going to let a certain amount of space, they, they only have so much room. And so, you know, historically, the SAT is one of the data points that we use. Well, if they're not using SAT data, what are they using? And it can only be grades, because it was just grades. Again, they've got lots of students who are not similar. So I think, um, I think some colleges have started to go back to SAT a lot more. I think that's happened. And I think, I think some colleges use the AP classes as well. You know, how can we, how can we look at that?
But the, so also the, the state adopted the SAT as its state assessment in eleventh grade. And so I think that was probably six, eight years ago. The idea that was so that all kids coming out of high school had at least taken the SAT. And I believe those schools are good for five years, but if they decided down the road they wanted to go to school, they have an option to plug in an SAT. So, and I, and I, I'm not sure where the contract is, but the state has a contract with SAT to administer the SAT as the state assessment. So it's not just the SAT, it's the state assessment is the SAT.
And I think what's beautiful about that is we spent hundreds of years, and so old, sort of, around the long ride, I wonder if where the state's coming up with their own test for so many years. And it's like, why are we doing this? So we have an assessment that will largely give us very similar information.
I think another component too is while schools are, some are test optional, a lot of merit money is tied to SAT scores. So even schools that are test optional for admission, they have standards for your SATs for financial aid. So I think sometimes kids are misled that the SATs maybe aren't as important or schools aren't looking well when it comes down to some of that financial money on merit or in toward. So I think there's a lot of reasons it's still there.
So that's the information on, on just the SAT and the New Hampshire state assessment for the new school. I also, uh, kind of indeed, I came, came about it just as I was looking for things this summer. And, um, I gave some historical data on, on our AP exam. And it actually came from the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project. So that's who did the study. And they're pretty much looking at who had access to, um, advanced placement classes and how does, how do schools do and how to, um, things along those lines. Uh, so it was interesting when I looked at these. So this data is from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one. This, again, this is not data that I compiled, but it is data that's compiled by the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project and certainly pointed Sunapee, or presented Sunapee in a positive light. So in Sunapee, between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-one, ninety percent of our students took an AP exam. You know, which, which, uh, which is the eight highest percentage of students in the state, um, having access, well, taking them, I guess, you know, all of our kids technically have access to it. And I actually think that percentage will increase. You can see here the state average of the ten percent and the highest percentage in the state is twenty-nine percent. Then, um, well, okay, so you've got lots of kids taking them. What percentage of students have successful results on the exam? And, uh, a successful result is determined to be a three or four or five. In that case, we had an eighty-one point nine percent, uh, successful result. And that was the fifth highest percentage of successful in the state. So we've got, one, a lot of students taking them, and number two, a lot of students doing well on them. And according to the, the fairness project, one of the things they said the best number would be, okay, well, how many successful exams do you have for one hundred students? And on that, uh, we, we were the fourth class, so we had twenty-seven percent. Uh, we had twenty-seven successfully ones for one hundred students. Again, lots of good information. I think, I think it's important as we, as we look at doing other things. Now, one of the things we've, we've done is we added, uh, an advanced placement computer science class for the freshman students. Now, one thing it will certainly do, it will increase the percent of our students who are taking the AP exam. It also might decrease our number, our percentage of successful results. So we, we look at those things. You know, Mr. Palin, who's here, uh, does the AP history. He's still twisted his arm for a few years, but they'll be a time where Mr. Palin will not be teaching AP history. Uh, Mr. Coverdale is taught the AP, uh, language arts and the AP literature course, and he's gonna be retiring this year. So trying to find teachers, uh, to successfully do these, because there is, um, it's a lot of work, uh, a lot of preparation. We do have teacher turnover, which, we don't have a lot of teacher turnover, but we're gonna have some teacher turnover. Is going to impact the delivery of these things and how we deliver them. I can tell you right now, the plan is, um, you know, with Mr. Coverdale retiring, we're going to, he's taught both of them in alternating years. I think next year, our plan is to have two different teachers teach different AP classes, and they'll both be run on every year. We'll see if the numbers allow that. AP biology, we don't want every year because we don't have the numbers. But that's just some historical data on the advanced placement exams, which I thought you'd like to see. And then, um, on the back of that, I gave the, the last information I have is our advanced placement, uh, data from last year. It gives you the Sunapee scores, the New Hampshire scores, and the global information. That one I didn't wanna get into. I, you know, certainly for you, I didn't wanna go into more, as much detail on that, because it really, again, with our size, it really starts to really pinpoint. You know, I'll use, uh, oh, we didn't run it last year, but imagine when the biology tests for kids and the, the, the pass rate was twenty-five percent. Well, now all of a sudden, we'd really talk about how, you know, we can kind of tell you which kids did pass tests or things like that. You certainly have, um, to look at how the different courses, um, get done. The AP computer science, you can see had one ninety students. That was a new course that had more access last year, because our, again, our plan is that freshmen will take that. We want to take that one forward. But last year, we had a lot more upperclassmen taking it, um, because they haven't had the opportunity to do so. Like, I know they didn't take that class last year. So overall, I think the good news is we continue to test well. Uh, our teachers take it seriously. Our students take it seriously. And, uh, I'm pretty happy with the results.
Ready for me? All right. So, uh, looking at all mentor school results, I just focused in on our state and New Hampshire SAS. Some point in the year, uh, I hope to show you some local assessment results, just to look at a comparison of what we look like when we look at kids a little more directly. Overall, we are considerably above the state in the number of the grades, as you can see, uh, like seventy-three percent and thirty-eight percent for grade five. We, um, outdid the average for the SAS, and this is probably the first time where it was that elevated. I did pull that information and didn't include it in here, but typically, we're a little closer than that. The next page, what I included for you was grade three, four, and five breakdown comparing us to some schools around us, similar schools. Really, only one of the schools outperformed us regularly, and that's Grantham. So, uh, looking at that, just some thoughts around what are they doing that's going really well for them that, in our case, like grade three, for example, reading sixty-seven percentile, and they have eighty-three. So I wanna, uh, Jeff White and I, our literacy interventions, have talked about possibility of a field trip to see what they're doing. Just see the good results. Um, the next page, what I put together for you was a little bit of the cohort. Only one cohort can we see three, four, or five right now, because, you know, our fourth graders aren't fifth graders yet. So you can see it's fairly steady. Uh, last year, there was considerable jump from our third to fourth to the fifth grade to eighty-eight percent of being proficient in the reading. And that could be a couple of factors. One, we started receiving some tuition students in that group. I think we got five. And if you have five come in and all five meet the standard, it's gonna considerably change that number. I didn't look at that deeply to see, but, uh, just knowing the five that we, four or fives we had, that's probably playing into it quite a bit. And the last piece of information that I wanted to include was our overall school performance since two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. That's as far back as the state will give me. Uh, I'm sure I can get the rest of it. Looking through it, like reading, for example, uh, we were at seventy-one percent proficient. That's a three or four in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And of course, through the COVID nineteen pandemic, we saw faltering of those scores, uh, but they've recovered. Math, we have not seen a recovery, um, by doing, actually, this is the first time I've looked at that historical data in that way. So I'm actually looking to bring that to the staff, upcoming staff meeting at some point, have some conversation around, uh, what we're doing, what our practices are, and digging deep. We just recently, uh, last year, adopted the iReady math program. And, uh, so there's gotta be, I think there's gotta be some additional conversation. And as you can see from, like I said, from the science one, um, those fifty-ones, forties are more in line with the state average through those years. And I actually think most of those years actually may have even been in the high thirties for the state performance, when I quickly browse through them. So overall, we, we're doing very well. Uh, some of my wonderings around just what we can do in the future. Because we stay relatively flat, that means likely, if we dug up the data, the same students are probably a one or two. What do we need to do? What systems do we need to put in place for those students to grow them, rate, you know, aim for the stars and aim for the next level? And that's, that's really, that's really it for me.
So the bottom table, is this the, this is the average overall, so third through fifth grade? This, this table here?
Yes. Yes. So that's our school performance in that year, three, grades three, four, and five. The percent of testing, tested kids who were proficient, either a three or four.
So Russ, which one was it? There was, was it, it was the math? A year or two ago at the elementary school level? Is that what that sixty-four percent is? Was that the last time we talked about it? And there was something being done to, to do some interventions?
Right. So I believe it was, I believe it was third grade math at the time. And if folks remember, we just implemented a new math curriculum this year. So our teachers went through a couple days. I had a professional development, you know, that came from looking at that. We were, um, we were fractured, I'll use that word, um, with what folks were using for a math curriculum. We were, some folks were in Engage New York, and other people were doing some other pieces. But the math department met over the last year and a half and came up with iReady math, and that has been implemented K through eight.
And then what's changed in the science that's, because that's a pretty.
I, I live there, I, I can't necessarily put my finger on that one, uh, because typically, no one does well in science. And to see that we hit seventy percent, Patrick, anything on that one?
Looking at the group, just, uh, I mean, look at their last year's performance overall, eighty-eight percent in reading, seventy-three percent in math. It's, that's not supposed to be sixty-five percent on that historical cohort. That's supposed to be seventy. Apparently, math has evaded me. But just looking at that, they're, they're very, they're a very high-performing group overall, um, through the years. And they responded well to interventions and instruction. So I think that's more in play with it. I know that this year, the, or this summer, the teachers worked on social studies considerably. And science is looking for their year to shine. So I think that that's gonna get some attention. And we'll be able to figure out if that was just a lip for something that we only test in, Sean helping, fifth, eighth?
It's fifth and eighth, but it's interesting. I, I mean, the, I think, um, if I'm, if I'm looking at the data, that, by the way, this is, um, probably the strongest elementary data list in the, like, this is really good academic data, so congratulations to the elementary school. But I think those are good things to look at when you look at, um, I'll use reading, right? So eight, reading eighty, eighty percent of, you know, um, were there, but seventy percent in science. It's like, oh, yeah, except that thirty-six was the state average. So a lot of times, they're really different tests. So I would, I would say that that, that actually is a very strong science test, given, given.
It's a very strong science.
Yeah, so.
Very, very.
Same for math.
Yeah.
Seventy-three percent, but it's thirty-eight.
Seven, well, we've hit math, like, everyone hits math, like, we've hit some good math, but again, I, I can't, I, I believe, I don't care. We, um, we've refilled their consumables last year in, in science class, or it might have been the refilling their consumables in the science.
We implemented a new science curriculum, uh, two or three years ago in the fourth and fifth grades, I believe. So I wonder if this is something on.
So they've been doing some work around it, and we're trying to focus on that. Um, some grades, kind of like with math, were a little fractured again, because everyone was looking for something to do. So our lower grades are using something called mystery science, which is a problem-based program full of engineering tasks. And our upper grades have been using Amplify. Um, it seems to be more of an interest to move to a mystery science, K to five. So, uh, I think this summer, there'll be some conversation around what we're doing there. Just to kind of give you an idea of that test, Sean's right, it's a tough test. Uh, I sat in there, uh, just unfamiliar with the test being from Vermont. It is abstract. We teach our kids using manipulatives, as Mr. Holden pointed out, using problem, solution kind of thing. And suddenly, science is being presented to them only on a computer, no manipulatives. They can't do anything. They just have to look at a problem and solve it. So it's very abstract. So I think it's, uh, an interesting way to test it, given how we teach it. But we, we did well last year, uh, and I'm interested to see how well we do this year.
I think those percentages are important. I remember, I'm gonna date myself, but back when we were in the SAU, the, the Newport SAU, we had one year where our math proficiency level was forty-one percent. I was down the superintenses, like, you're forty-one percent, like, what the heck happened? And then the state data hadn't come out. We were, we had the second highest proficiency rate in the state. So it was just, it was before the SAT. It was just known. It was a, they had really come up with a standard, which was tremendously difficult, that all of a sudden, we're forty-one percent. And, and we were second in the state. So I think it's important to look at, at that data. By the same stretch, if, if the proficiency level of the state is ninety-five percent and we're at eighty-five percent, it's like, why aren't we at ninety-five percent there? But these are really, really good elementary scores on the ground. I'm really encouraged to dig them up.
So I think it's, you know, a couple of things with these scores. One, it certainly speaks to the quality of level of instruction in our classrooms at both the elementary and the, and the high school, middle high school level. It is, as all assessments are, there's no time. They're a metric. They're not the only metric. They're one metric. Some kids do a lot better on tests. Some kids don't do well on tests. But it, the cohort data, that it's a lot easier to see in sixth, seventh grade and in, in three, four, five, uh, to be able to see that progression, right? To see kids going in the right direction is what we're looking for. And like Sean said, whether that's going from sixty-three percent to sixty-five percent or seventy percent, you're going in the right direction. You're not dropping off. And typically, we see that progression, um, going in a positive. So well done, well done, both of you, and to your teachers.
Moving on to public forum in accordance with policy B E D H. Would anybody like to talk? Seeing none, let me move on. School updates, S C E S.
I wanna start off by first recognizing our, our amazing staff. Uh, we've had people out for professional developments. We've had people out ill, uh, both themselves and their family members. And just the can-do attitude, the will-do attitude of our staff is making those days that sometimes Carrie and I show up in the morning, not, Carrie Gross, are, show up in the morning and wonder how we're gonna plug in all the holes of little coverage here and there. We couldn't do it without everyone being right there to raise their hand and say, what can I do? That is a big piece of the theme of the year, though, because at the same time, when you get that, that's another thing for someone to do. So I just wanna highlight that, yes, we're doing it. We're doing it well. We're doing it great, but we're doing it on the backs of people who are always willing. Our Scholastic Book Fair was the beginning of the month. Uh, Heidi Doyle, our librarian, uh, did an amazing job with it this year. We crushed sales. Not that I wanna make money for Scholastic, but really what comes in is about twenty-five hundred dollars total towards our library program and books and materials because of that. Um, so that's a huge piece of it. We're well over, uh, numbers for the last, I think, seven or eight years. We looked back just to see, so we could kind of get an idea of what we're looking at for things that we could go and buy for our library. Our author visit was this last week. Ralph Fletcher, who's written both books for teachers about teaching the joys of writing and how to teach that and keep it to be versus a monotonous task, something that's enriching and fulfilling for our students. He also writes picture books. And he came and visited because of the collaboration between the school, the Abbott Library, and the Friends of the Abbott. He did a ninety-minute professional development with our teachers on the topic of capturing the joy of writing, having our students enjoy it versus being a task. And then the students went over to the Abbott and had presentations from him. And it wasn't like he just gave the same presentation to every group. He gave a unique one to our kindergartners, to our third and fourth graders, our fifth graders. And he had really great messages for our kids that they could really understand, because he really tailored it to them. Our playground committee has now met twice. What we're looking at is we found two vendors who are willing to submit proposals. I contacted like eight companies. A number of them have said, we're so far out on being able to get product and it's still getting delayed. If we take on any more customers, when we actually get this product, we're gonna have like thirty builds in a period of five weeks. So some of them are like callback in four months. That's not helpful as we're looking, because we wanna be able to design, build, well, design, fundraise, and then build in a period of time. So two companies, Altplay, which is out of Southern Mass, and then O'Brien and Sons, which is out, out of Southern New Hampshire. Both came, they did a site. Um, both came, they did a site visit and they presented us with options. One of them presented two, the other one presented one. We met as a committee, reviewed them, and took about nine pages of notes of feedback for them, and are going to ask them to take a second swing. One of the, uh, one of them had said to me, don't worry about it, we just finished a job that had fifteen revisions before we were done. So I think, uh, we're a committee who's going to be on trail for a couple, at least. I will bring that end proposal to you, just to share it with you, uh, when we have it, either December or January. But I gotta get that information to them for them to take their swing at it. We conducted our annual cereal drive and, and over the last month, we broke our record and raised four, sorry, five hundred and forty-six boxes of cereal that were donated to various food banks around the area. Last year it went as far away as Claremont, not far, but there were a number of towns who benefited from it. Um, I just want to acknowledge that, um, the Village After School Program. Uh, I've been collaborating with them the last couple of weeks around their emergency operation plans, making sure that if something were to happen while they're on our school grounds after hours, that they have a plan in place. Um, been working with them around some other policy kind of things and making sure that things are working between the school and the program. But Sam, um, Bailey, and Kelly Pickett have been wonderful to work with. Um, and that's just, that's just been, uh, one of the great things of the year for me because it was such a requested item. Uh, to follow up on last month's report, with the state mandated dyslexia screener, we administered all the computer adaptive tests to a hundred and eleven students. We got back the results and thirty-five of those students were, um, highlighted for additional assessments. So additional assessments, one-to-one, I administered some of them too, just because I felt like I wanted to know what we were getting into. Some of them could be one minute, one and done. And I had that happen with my, one of my students. He may not have taken the screener too seriously, is what we've probably determined. Others of them, we had to keep going down in order of skills. So it starts at the very high order of reading with oral reading fluency and then moves down into smaller, more, my, my neat levels of skill. To try to figure out where the kids are having a disconnect between their reading and their skill set. So we can identify those students that need supports and target them. That can be classroom intervention, or it can be intervention pullout. And we're going to do a mix and match of that according to the student, the grade, what's necessary for both sides of that. Um, we just sent a group of teachers to the first day of a three-part workshop on building, uh, systems, inclusive systems for student success. On top of having the dyslexia screener, we're talking about that because this is a big, um, push towards that kind of movement. Being able to make sure that everyone can access the education. So they're working on behavior systems through this, uh, this training, um, thinking about what, as a community, we want our expectations to be. I'm really excited about it because last year only four of us went and it was people who weren't in the classroom. We wanted to see if this was something we wanted to pursue for, to help us. This year we're sending two classroom teachers OT, um, sorry, three classroom teachers OT, um, a special educator. We're sending quite a bit. Um, so that diverse group is really looking at what we can do. Um, but that's really it for me.
Moving on to S M, S M H S.
Why don't we start with Mr. Flader? That way I will, if he has anything that I have, I'll show it to you.
All right, uh, hi, everybody. I'm David Flader. I'm the elected senior representative to the school board. Um, good evening, thanks for having me here tonight. Overall, student life at S M H S is quite good as of right now, with a few things really to complain about. Uh, as fall sports wind down, students are now getting excited for winter sports and activities. NHS is hosting an empty bowls charity event, which will hopefully be well-attended as tickets for the event have already sold out. Uh, I have received a couple of concerns about the music program in specific, on how a singular music teacher covers all the music from kindergarten through twelfth grade, meaning that students don't really get a personalized or consistent experience learning music. And I've also received a little bit of a worry about the lack of a French teacher, leaving some students who were taking French in an awkward situation of having to either switch to Spanish and be left with a partial understanding of two languages, or taking a V-Lax French class, which does not align with their past curriculum, and they result in an inferior learning experience. If anybody here has any further questions, I'm happy to answer them. I will also be here after the meeting and I'm open to talking about anything you're curious about.
Just want to welcome you to work and thank you for volunteering.
So can I give a, a quick, David and maybe Sean, we're going to say this, and I appreciate you letting David go first. Um, I've known David for a while, uh, from, from way back, way back in fourth or fifth grade, I guess, when he asked me to start a coding club. But I think what's unique about David here, uh, for the first time, and for our student rep. So Sonneby, six years, I'm sure, maybe seven years ago, put a student rep, it wasn't a mandate, it was something we decided to do to give student voice. Uh, legislation was changed last year that said that all school boards will have a student rep. So David started off, he is the elected student rep from the student body. So he was appointed by myself, by Sean, he was an elected student rep of the student body. So, um, that's a great sort of new position. He really is one of you without voting powers, but representing that student voice and elected by his peers. He's going down to a training in December down at the School Board Association, very much like training that you all met through, uh, on a Saturday morning. He's kind of learned what it means to be on a school board and how to, things run and sort of his role now as student rep. So again, just welcoming David as our elected student rep.
And one thing we did, uh, support, so David was elected by the student council this year. We talked with the student council and we're, uh, we were a little later, we talked about this year and, uh, what we'll do next year and we'll do it in the spring. So we'll do it a little differently than we did it this year, but, um, you know, they were excited to have David there and, uh, and David has some experience anyway. So David was, you know, kind of filled in some area number last year for, for candidates. A couple of things to add on to David. Uh, as he said, we have the, uh, the high, the, the, the fourth season came to an end at, at the same time as Spirit Week. Spirit Week is a, is a lot of fun for the students and it's a week that Mr. Morton is like, I hope Spirit Week ends pretty soon. Um, but, uh, it's, it's all, it's all in good fun. They, they, the student council does a nice job of coming up with, uh, different theme days, um, which I like to call, it's fine an excuse for wearing a hat. Um, you know, but, uh, that's, it seems like everything they do somehow fits into that. Or pajamas, one or the other, but, uh, um, they did a nice job and they do a nice job of trying to rotate things around and keep things fresh. Uh, you know, drama production is coming up this month. Uh, it's a Midsummer Night's Dream set in the nineteen eighties, so that will be, um, coming up. The eighth grade froze their way through a Boston field trip today. Um, I usually go, I stay at home. I saw the weather report, no. Um, I, I did not go with, uh, Ms. Christiansen and Mrs. Reed and Mr. Dalton went with the eighth grade. Uh, as, as David said, we're, we're sold out for empty bowls, uh, so that's coming up, uh, next week. And we had the National Honor Society induction last Sunday and a lot of, uh, a lot of very deserving and a large number of kids were inducted into that Sonneby National Honor Society. So, um, lots of good things going on.
Moving on to school board topics is, hopefully, a superintendent update outside.
Well, I will make it brief. Uh, been very busy with budget. Um, we had our first budget meeting with the, the board tonight and I think we're in a good place. And we look forward to working with the ABC, uh, next Wednesday night here at the, uh, Middle High School Library at five o'clock. And keep an eye on legislation. Um, there's some interesting things, folks. House Ed has ninety-nine bills that they're looking at, just in House Ed. Um, there are like close to nine hundred LSIs. They're now starting to get some terminology behind these LSIs so you can actually see what they, what their intent is. Um, it's just going to be, as always, a very interesting legislative session here in New Hampshire. We'll keep an eye on it and as things become a little more clearer to us, uh, we will let you know where and when, if we can push in, to continue to make sure the public education has a strong voice, not only here in Sonneby but down in Concord. Really focusing on school safety, a little bit of a different twist. Um, obviously we're all aware of, you know, our, our emergency operation plans, uh, things that we, we practice, our drills, our fire drill, our intruder, our lockdowns. Um, but looking at cybersecurity is something that we're really taking a hard look at. So we are bringing in the state cybersecurity expert, uh, specialist, um, in January on our PD day to talk to us about cybersecurity, not only from a, a public use or a, a school use, but also a private use. Um, you know, entities right now across our state are already compromised and don't even know they're compromised. Um, typically hackers and things, they spend six months or so in the background. Um, there are some stories that I've heard and John's heard them, um, they make you head spin and they, they frighten you almost worse than the threat of actually someone being in your school. Uh, taking people's identities when they're children, wiping out their, their, their sort of value, uh, ability to get loans after they turn eighteen, stealing social security numbers. It's just, uh, data security really is a, a very real threat. Um, I think what's hard for us as educators is it's not tangible. If you talk to me about a school shooting, I can picture that. You talk to me about being breached or being held hostage for your data. Even though we went through it, the impact of that was, okay, we were down here a little bit, but we got everything back and we kept going. But we were very fortunate, that doesn't happen, a lot that doesn't happen. And nowadays even the, the hackers and the people holding ransoms, um, we are fortunate enough to say no. No is not something you get to say anymore. They will say, you will say, yes, you will pass what we want. We'll distribute any information that we have on, on your students or your staff and we'll put it on the doc web. And it goes on the doc web and that's where people start to lose, again, bank accounts, uh, right, credit, credit reports, things like that, just, uh, hostile information. So, um, bringing somebody in to speak to our staff, I think it's going to be a really important, uh, opportunity for us to learn a little bit about cybersecurity. Um, had my first community, superintendent community conversation, thank you to the few of you that went. Um, it was an opportunity to talk normally about cybersecurity and our EOP plan. Chief, uh, Chief Cobb was there, uh, but also our new adjustment counselor, uh, Shania Otis, and Hannah Grant, uh, SEL specialist at the elementary school. He gave a really nice overview of some of the needs and their positions within our district. And then we did a quick review of our emergency operation plan. And then finally, uh, I need to put a plug out there for if there's anybody interested in working in our food service department. Um, my counterpart over there in the back row, Mr. Reed and I have served lunch through elementary school, uh, students. Uh, John looked at me and said, um, they can't eat that much. So I was serving the elementary school kids pieces of pizza that were this big. Um, so he's like, maybe we cut them in halves. I was like, maybe we cut them in thirds. Third seemed to work. Um, so I've been helping with Rob with, um, serving lunches as John and some other people have, and I, we greatly appreciate that. But Rob is short-staffed right now and has been short-staffed probably for the last four weeks. Um, we are doing our best to help him, but if folks know somebody who's looking for middle-of-the-day type of job, like a ten-thirty to two in the food service, a retired person, would come pick up a couple of extra bucks, please send my way. Um, not that I mind serving lunch and the kids in the high school actually appreciate me serving lunch because they get a little more, because I guess my hands are a little bigger when I put stuff onto a plate. Not sure if that's good or bad, uh, but we could definitely use some help in the food service department. And that's it.
Anybody have anything for school board topics they'd like to bring? I think we've got our hands full coming up over the next few, few months with budget. Can I look for a motion to approve the second reading of our policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policies as they are stated on the meeting agenda.
So anything, Scott, that you'd like to go over that stands out?
Uh, not really. Uh, Amanda and I met with the administration in, uh, late September prior to the first reading in early October. And of course, uh, a lot of that is driven by recommendations from the New Hampshire School Board Association and legislative changes. So, uh, with the policies that are listed on the agenda, if you go to the website and click on the agenda, those policies are listed behind the agenda. And I believe all of the changes that have been made are in italics. And I think only one of the policies, ACN is a brand-new policy, all of the others, uh, involve revisions to existing policies. So I guess I would just throw it out to my colleagues to see if they have any questions on, uh, any of the policies listed on the agenda. Going once? Going twice?
We did try to color code. All right, all those in favor, accepting the second reading?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you for all of your efforts, Russ, staying on top of the, uh, gorgeous slay of changes that makes our job easier.
He will move on, looking for a motion to approve the extracurricular positions.
I'll make a motion to approve the extracurricular positions.
I'll second Carrie's motion.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Moving on to information items, S C E S project update.
So, um, I think two weeks ago now, we did, um, a final walkthrough in the elementary school because all the major renovations are done. So we identified some punch list items, a much shorter list than the last go-around, so pending completion of those items. And maybe, Russ, you have an update since we met two weeks ago? I don't know, but they were, they were pretty small things, you know, touch-up paint and nothing major that came out of that. So I think we really, really are standing on the doorstep of done on this finally.
We are waiting for backdoor, you can get in, probably need another Thanksgiving or Christmas vacation because a lot of it was paint.
Yep.
Uh, a couple of little, small little fire panels of paint for the most part. And we have been biomass fired up and been running all week and heating both the gym and the elementary school. So if you've been coming up and down the hill, you might have seen the plume, but the vapor plume coming up the biomass.
Oh, and I didn't notice all the foundation work around.
So they're waiting for that company to commit, they, they called, they're coming, but that's what they're waiting for. They're coming to put a spray on the, outside of the biomass foundation. Because of its location on the hill, it was seeping some water and they don't want to do that.
Nezdek enrollment projections.
So in your packet, also on our website, under the school board tab, enrollment, is the latest Nezdek enrollment. Um, pretty interesting information. Again, Nezdek continues to be consistent, um, with where they're putting us or where we're at. Uh, I think a couple of pieces that jumped out was the amount, so this year we're working at, quoting the Nezdek, sixty-five tuition students. It does project our enrollment, uh, from, to going up, um, over the next four, five, six years. Again, they're very interesting, they have been pretty consistent, uh, but they're projecting in twenty-thirty, uh, that we'd be up to four hundred and forty students. Uh, I don't know, we've hit that number in a long time, so if we're all here in forty, twenty-thirty, we can see a forty, forty-nine. Other than that, it continues to be a good report we're having, and it is on our website.
Looking to make a motion to approve the manifest as written.
Make a motion to approve the manifest as written.
Any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Seeing none, passes. Agenda items for next meeting? I don't have any, is Russ anything that you want to-
Uh, we'll, budget, give you a quick budget update. Um, I think probably that would be the main pieces we're going with, with the board.
We're going to be fired to the next meeting again.
We are meeting on the eighth, the fifteenth.
Okay.
And then, then first, uh, the first, the fourth, December meeting.
I think so, yeah.
Next two Wednesdays, Thanksgiving, and the next one.
Eight fifteen, six. Six is a double meeting.
Yep.
Well, I know that you and Kelly have been really busy crunching the numbers for the last month, so thank you for all of your diligent work, kind of peeing it up there for us and getting it ready, so your efforts are much appreciated. Thank you.
We don't have any requests to go on the menu of A, so looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All of the favor? Holding everybody in.